Call this city council meeting to order Monday, June 12th. Before we go into the meeting, I would like to read a prepared statement first. In January, City Council passed legislation giving the codes department the authorization to issue a five-year rental license revocation for owners of rental properties who are grossly negligent and habitually noncompliant with the city's residential rental unit registration program. This decision was the result of extensive research and study conducted by the codes department into rental programs in other cities and municipalities throughout the state, with many of them having similar successful revocation policies. Based on the findings, it was determined that additional tools were necessary here in Altoona to ensure landlords maintain their rental properties in a decent, safe, and sanitary condition that meet minimum standards of habitability. It is important to note, and I want to emphasize, that the license revocation process that has been put into place is based on very specific criteria, which is outlined in the ordinance, and is reserved for only for landlords with repeated and consistent noncompliance of derelict properties. It is not meant for the many responsible landlords who provide safe, clean, and quality housing for their tenants here in the city. Since the adoption of this policy, three landlords operating in the city of Altoona have been issued five-year rental license revocations for all of their rental properties. Operation Safe Space, a program developed to assist tenants with relocation from properties under license revocation, has been used to help the tenants in these three cases with positive results. The city remains committed to prioritizing the utmost safety and well-being of all residents in our community and preventing rental properties from becoming an influence that fosters blight and deterioration in our city. We encourage and look forward to working with responsible investors and landlords who are interested in providing clean and safe housing to their tenants.
Very nice.
Thank you. We'll now have a moment of silent prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Linda, would you call the role, please?
Councilman Beatty.
Here.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Here.
Councilwoman Carper is absent. Councilman Ellis.
Here.
Councilman Ikis.
Here.
Councilman Kelly.
Here.
Mayor Pacifico.
Here. Okay, we have two presentations on the agenda tonight. The first is Phyllis Baker and Frank Kapriva from the Blair Regional YMCA here to talk about the Angie Jiosa Fourth of July Memorial Race, the 50th, I should add.
We're back.
Yeah, thank you. It is the 50th year of this event. I couldn't find exact, but I know it's at least or at best the second longest continuously run foot race in the state of Pennsylvania. There are some other ones that we won't talk about, but 50 years is great, and we're really proud of that. We're proud to be the torchbearers for this event. Fifty years is awesome. If you would have run in every single race that since the start of this event, you would have run 465 miles, which is almost 46 times running around the perimeter of the city limits. So it's a pretty impressive thing when you start adding numbers up like that, and we're proud to keep it going, and hopefully we have another 50 years in us.
I hope we have another 50 years in us.
Angie ran 465 miles every week.
Yeah, Angie was a great guy, and we hope to have his great niece at the event, but we couldn't do it without the people we're looking at right here with the chief of police, fire police, the ambulances, you know, you folks up here, the good council, who allow us to come into the city and take it over from about 4:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. We hope to have a very large crowd this year because it is our 50th year. A lot of the old timers coming in, and they want to be at the race, and they want to say that they... Bill Rogers is an awesome runner, if anybody knows who he is, and a lot of people will say, and he ran this race, and a lot of people will say, "I beat Bill Rogers to the start line," because he always won. So we have some history with this, and again, I want to thank each and every one of the council members, Mayor Pacifico, all of the fire police, the chief of police, all the folks who put on the sprinklers for us, and the runners run through it, and those who keep us safe on the road. The Y wants to continue to partner with the city of Altoona. As we're doing with Prospect Park, some of you already know that we, through the Altoona Rotary Club, we are offering free swimming lessons to those fine folks in the area of Prospect Park and anybody in the city of Altoona. So the more that the Y can do this with the city, the better off we both are, and we want to continue to do these great things because you guys are great people, and you allow us to do it. So thank you very much.
And one last comment, that we have anywhere from 800 to we've had over 1,000 people participate in this event, and if we would add in the free lollipop participants, which is up to almost 100 kids, six and under that do that, we're talking about 2,000-plus people coming to downtown Altoona on July 4th. And the one comment that we hear the most is how awesome the people that are not from here think the city is and how much they buy into the event. Every neighborhood they go through is out with their flags and the pride that they have. It's truly an Altoona tradition, and we would welcome any ideas, as we always do, to improve upon the event that's been going on for 50 years. So thank you all very, very much.
And another quick thing, of those 1,000 people who are running, there's a mom, a dad, a sister, a brother who are there to watch them. So the downtown plaza is just huge, full of people. We invite Mayor Pacifico, we want you there, and any other city council member who wants to come, we invite you all, but Mayor, we hope that that'll be part of your Fourth of July Day.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
It's my Fourth of July tradition now.
Awesome. Thank you all.
We'll see you July 4th. I registered.
Did you? Fifteen K or 5K?
5K. I did the 15K once, and it's not for me.
You see God on Ruskin Drive with the 15K. He's not there to take it, just to encourage you.
It's other people saying it. It's not mine.
Good job. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, our next presentation is the Public Works Department 2022 Annual Report given by Nate Kissel.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our 2002 annual report. Public Works is made up of highway, engineering, buildings, and electrical departments. In 2022, we were home to 52 full-time employees. That's a plus one from 2021. Seasonal workers last year consisted of four in the wintertime, seven in the summertime. Winter workers typically are night riders or guys who are staff that are there on the off-hours when the crew aren't there, just kind of keeping an eye on the roads. Summertime help includes a lot of weed eating, parks maintenance, and those type of activities. It was a busy year for personnel changes in '22. Steve Auker was promoted to right-of-way supervisor. Sam Rogers was promoted to the engineering office manager. Jordan Reichley was promoted to an inspector. We hired Stacy Delphos in engineering as a clerical one. Zach Rents became a mechanic. Dylan Kratzer was hired as a lineman two. Caleb Cox, who is the son of our... Not late, but...
Retired.
Retired deputy chief, Joe Cox. He's in our engineering department. Jeff Arthur's was promoted to a lineman one. Scott Cooper came back from the police department to become crew leader. Larry Nileske came from the housing rehab program back to an equipment operator two, and Fred Seville came as an equipment operator two, and he came over to City Hall to be a custodian. So these are our core activities within the highway department, street sweeping, pipe and inlet repairs, street restorations, parks, maintenance, signs and paint, pipe cleaning, complaints is a big one, and then we have two categories in our seasonal line, line up, leaf pickup in the spring and fall, and then brush removal in the wintertime when we aren't plowing snow. 2022 was another robust year for our street restoration program. So the crews, both our subcontracted crew and our in-house crew, added $650,000 towards general fund revenue, redoing the street repairs after utilities make repairs underneath the surface, 720 street restorations. We were able to run a fair weather overtime program last year of about five months, which helps with the backlog that we have, and with that revenue itself funds about 10 of the employees out to highway yard for almost half a year. Winter last year, winter kind of goes over years, but last winter was a pretty mild winter, so we were down probably around $50,000 from where we were the year before with the tons of salt that we bought. Our overtime was down for the year, but we still had $64,000 in overtime, and just want to mention the crews are on two shifts in the wintertime. We have 24-hour coverage, and just a shout-out to the crews for being responsive for callouts and getting the job done when it needs to get done. The electrical department in the city takes care of really a lot of activities and a lot of things, signals and streetlights. We have over 100 signals that we take care of in the city and Logan Township by partnership agreement. We billed for over $75,000 of insurance claims last year with streetlight knockdowns, and really, that's probably about it, and a couple signal issues. And then when they're not busy doing that, they're just working on just about everything else. This year, they put cameras up at Prospect Pole. They were in City Hall today changing out some of our toiletry items in the bathrooms. So just an overall kind of catch-all department that just does anything we want them to do. And a lot of the other departments take advantage of them also and do a lot of repairs in their buildings. We have almost, we have about 171 pieces in inventory. The fleet department always takes a good, or always does a really good job of keeping everything running. They do public works, all of Blair Rec's pieces, police department, highways, and codes department. Moving on to engineering, the projects shown on this slide were administered in 2022. This is all kind of our capital program and ARPA projects that we had on the books. This number was up from about 3 million in 2021, so we doubled in size, and everybody kind of did a really nice job on making sure we kind of were able to get this slid in there. But in addition to that, the engineering department takes care of some surveying needs, land development reviews, bridge inspections on all of our city-owned bridges, take care of traffic concerns, property vacations, floodplain permits come through our department, stormwater reviews come through our department, and just a lot of complaints that just don't fit nicely into other departments, they get funneled through that department as kind of the home base for those till they get disseminated from there. So, I mean, over the past few months, we've really gone over the ARPA project, so there were a couple ones that didn't hit that highlight reel. So the first one is the 17th Street electrical upgrades. We had two systems that were in place when 17th Street was built, and so this was just kind of a cleanup of the systems that were there. We were able to add battery backups to all those lights coming down through there, so even in an event of outage, the light should work pretty well. And then also, we had some cleanups to do with the streetlights along 17th Street, so this project took all that in to kind of put it into a one-shot project. As part of CDBG, last year, we funded a new sidewalk from Hamilton Park in the Fairview area, and that comes down Cherry Avenue towards Juniata Gap Road, and we installed a new signalized crossing at Juniata Gap also. So, and we have a lot of foot traffic from up in that area down towards the Spray Park, so this was a nice little project that we were able to do. Last year, we did an, it kind of was a double, a dual year, but we had an Arlie grant project through PennDOT. We did some pedestrian improvements on 17th Street. We added some advanced signing to the school zone at Fourth Avenue, and then also at Margaret Avenue, we put in a signalized crosswalk there. And we also did a little bit of work over by Baker School with some signs that are, they're hooked to a timer, so they come on automatically, and we were able to work with the school and give them a remote control system so they can turn it on when they need to with the kids coming across the street there. '22, we also updated the lights at Garfield Park. I don't know if any of you have been up there, but the lights were end of life, so we updated those with new LED fixtures. The Eads Group and Kevin in the electrical department did a really nice job here. We were able to salvage some of the parts that we thought we were going to have to replace, and with those savings, we were able to plant a couple new poles and then light a second field up there. So I believe that Mike... So, I believe that Mike at Blair Rec had moved some of his programming up there in the fall, um, which was much needed and very appreciative, I guess, of what we did there. So, every year, um, just kind of a touch on liquid fuels. We have about one, we get about one, we get between one point three and one point five million dollars a year. So, on the, on the slide here, these are all the things that we pay for out of liquid fuels. So, these aren't taxes levied to residents of the city. They're paid through the gas tax. So, the highlights there, we, about half a million dollars in highway salaries come out of there, all of our winter materials and all of our streetlights. Anything that's left over, um, you know, we usually try to lump into a project. That happens about once every three years, and we have enough to do a small project with what's left over. So, the city of Altoona, we're still part of that, the Blair County Intergovernmental Stormwater Committee. We're in the fifth year of our permit. We just got our permit, not, we got our new permits, so it's a five-year cycle. For the first two years of that permit, they haven't changed anything as it relates to the pollution reduction project, so uh, lack of a better term, we got a stay of execution for two years with no additional funding, really, a small amount of funding needed, but no other requirements other than what we've kind of put forth already as part of the group. So, in addition to those projects and being part of that group, we have one full-time employee that really takes care of a lot of the um, uh, program management that we have to do besides the projects. Grant news, just an update, again, these grants kind of run in multiple-year cycles, but uh, the Margaret Avenue project, we'll be bidding that this fall. That was one that we got last year, and it's been in design for the last year. The multimodal grant for, through Pendot for the Transportation Center, that's currently been awarded and that's in design right now. We're looking to go out to bid this fall with that project. We have a project in for consideration at Juniata Gap for lighting the uh, bike path or multi-use path that's down alongside that. The road at Juniata Gap, so that's almost eight hundred thousand dollars. We have a Green Light Go grant through Pendot. Uh, that's for over by Jeff Long's uh, Grand Palazzo. That's Twenty-Fifth Street and Seventh Avenue. That's the re-timing of all the lights coming through there. A new intersection at Seventh Avenue and Twenty-Fifth Street, and changing Twenty-Fifth Street from one-way back into two-way with some traffic. Some manipulation of curbing and sidewalks out through there. So, that's around eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we did get a grant through DCNR for Garfield Park. The total grant was seven hundred, the total project's seven hundred and fifty thousand with a fifty percent match. So, we got three seventy-five through DCNR for that project. And we also have the horseshoe trails up on, up above the horseshoe curve in for consideration right now, um, through DCED. So, there's not much new in the Pendot front. It's kind of business as usual. We cut grass for them. They give us line painting and salt brine. Uh, about twenty-four thousand dollars of cost benefit, uh, mutual cost benefit, I guess. But uh, we're already about halfway through twenty-three, and we still have a litany of bottlenecks and rocks in the road. With the ARPA funding that we've had, we've got a boost on a lot of the projects that I think that, you know, are really good projects and really needed to be done. But with that said, in our current staffing levels, a lot of the soft projects that we've had kind of just become stagnant or just kind of fell, fell behind. So, the planning and construction phases of the projects that, you know, we're doing with ARPA take a great deal of time uh, with the engineering staff and myself. So, um, you know, we're still struggling with vacancies in departments. Uh, we just can't find help at our pay structure, I guess. So, hopefully, as ARPA money kind of slows down, we can kind of get back into some of those soft projects. I think somebody mentioned before, we do currently still have our sidewalk um, assessment project. It's probably about eighty-five percent complete. Uh, we're doing that with some summer staff this year, uh, but other than that, um, traffic manuals, GIS implementation. Uh, we're re, we're reconfiguring kind of a customer concern software that works better with Public Works versus uh, anything else in the city. We have some ordinance revisions that we need to get done, uh, so we're planning on working on those here, hopefully this year and probably into next year, so. Uh, you can visit us under the government tab at altoonapa.gov, and you can find applications for handicap parking signs, uh, some driveway permits in there. Links to the projects that we've been working on, tips for winter services, stormwater information, and some adopted median paperwork and floodplain information. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Nate.
Thanks, Nate.
I just have one. Um, the battery backups on the traffic lights on Seventeenth Street, how, how long will they last if a, if a power outage occurs?
Um, I think Kevin said they'll stay on for an hour or two, depending on the temperature outside. If it's cold, or it's less.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Um, I need to announce that on uh, May twenty-second, we had a, an executive session for real estate personnel and potential litigation. And we also had one on June fifth for real estate. So, with that, I'll open up the floor to public comment. If anybody would like to address counsel, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to under five minutes. Floor is open.
Thanks.
Okay, seeing none, we will close the floor and go into the resolutions. Linda?
Item A is approving the minutes of the Altoona City Council meeting held Monday, May eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Item B is approving the ARPA Business District Revitalization Grant Program, recommendations detached here too, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item C is awarding the Garden Heights Park Project to mid-state construction in the amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars payable from ARPA funds and the general fund, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item D is authorizing an easement agreement between the city and Joseph Crossman for the purpose of construction, installation, repair, and maintenance of water and sanitary sewer lines with the city's unopened Forty-seventh Street off of Sixth Avenue, as shown on the easement plan, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item E is authorizing an easement agreement between the city and Kirk Stauffer and Swathy Malpatti for the purpose of the construction, installation, repair, and maintenance of a stormwater inlet off of Lowell Avenue, as shown on the easement plan, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item F is authorizing an easement agreement between the city and Kenneth Carter for the purpose of construction, repair, maintenance of a stormwater inlet off of Tennyson Avenue, as shown on the easement plan, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item G is authorizing the mayor to execute and the city clerk to attest to Form E dash GP, Consent of Land Owner as Owner of Real Property Identified as the Westerly Wastewater Treatment Facility in Duncansville to enable the Altoona Water Authority to obtain the necessary general permit authorization and/or approval of the Pennsylvania DEP to operate a code digestion project on said property. Item H is amending the two thousand twenty Community Development Block Grant Program, transferring twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars from the Housing and Community Development Program Administration Project to the Emergency Homeowner Roof Replacement Program. Item I is awarding a demolition contract to G and R Excavating and Demolition of Tyrone for the demolition of nine properties as follows. Twenty-three eleven Third Avenue, eight thousand one fifty, three twelve Fourth Avenue, six thousand eight ninety, eight, eighteen oh six Fifth Avenue, twelve thousand two forty, one sixteen Sixth Avenue, sixteen thousand six nineteen forty, thirteen twenty-nine Twenty-first Avenue, eight thousand four fifty, twenty-four oh six Eleventh Avenue, eight thousand nine fifty, twelve twelve Nineteenth Avenue, twelve thousand one fifty-six, one twenty-five Seventh Avenue, eight thousand one fifty, one oh nine to one fifteen East Grant Avenue, sixteen thousand six hundred, in the total amount of ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars and forty cents payable from the general fund, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item J is awarding a demolition contract to Earth Movers Unlimited of Kyler Town, Pennsylvania, for the demolition of two properties as follows. Fifteen oh nine First Avenue, eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, thirteen seventeen Seventeenth Avenue, two thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars, a garage only, in the total amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars payable from the general fund, further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item K is authorizing a subrecipient agreement between the city and UPMCL Altoona for the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for an empath unit, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item L is approving the renaming of the Hamilton Park Baseball Field located at three oh one East Cherry Avenue, Altoona to Coach Gino Field in honor and memory of Mr. Eugene Gino Himes, who devoted his life to coaching and officiating youth sports, and especially his greatest passion, Little League Baseball, where he dedicated most of his life to coaching and teaching the game of baseball to the youth of Altoona, including his children and grandchildren at Hamilton Park. Item M is approving a repository bid in the amount of one hundred dollars submitted by Shirley Pino of Homestead, Florida for property located eighteen twenty-five to twenty-seven Walton Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item N and O, item are by the same person, Mitchell Merritt of twelve oh two North Fifth Avenue. And the first one, item N, is a repository bid in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for property located at eleven twenty-four North Fifth Avenue. And item O is a, a property located one hundred fifty, I'm sorry, in the amount of one hundred and fifty dollars for a property located at four oh nine North Twelfth Street, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item, let me look at these. Item P through S are all repository bids in the, and they are by Wilson Ribero Jr. of San Carlos, California. Item P is in the amount of two hundred and eighty dollars for property located at two oh eight to two ten East Cherry Avenue. Item Q is in the amount of two hundred and sixty dollars for property located at eleven twenty-four to twenty-six North Fifth Avenue. Item R is in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five dollars in the amount for property located eighteen seventeen to nineteen Eighth Avenue. Item S is in the amount of three hundred dollars for property located at twenty thirteen to fifteen Thirteenth Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form on each of those. And items T, U, and V are by Jose Caballero of Puerto Rico. Item T is a repository bid in the amount of five hundred dollars for property located at three twenty-seven to twenty-nine Wapsenonic Avenue. Item U is a repository bid in the amount of five hundred dollars for property located at three thirty-one to thirty-three Wapsenonic Avenue. And item V is in the amount of five hundred dollars for property located at eighteen thirteen to fifteen Crawford Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form for those three. Item W is a repository bid in the amount of five hundred dollars submitted by David Anderson for property located at thirty-one twenty-seven to thirty-three Seventh Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item X is a repository bid in the amount of two hundred dollars submitted by Marvin Solis of Richmond, California for property located at eleven oh eight Seventeenth Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item Y is approving a repository bid in the amount of two hundred dollars submitted by Marvin Solis for property located at eleven ten Seventeenth Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item Z is approving a repository bid in the amount of twelve hundred dollars submitted by Christopher Jorstad of Mesa, Arizona, for property located at thirty-one twenty-seven to thirty-three Seventeenth, Seventh Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Is there anything that needs to be pulled for, either deleted, tabled, or pulled for separate vote?
I would like to pull for a separate vote M and P through Z.
So, I have to do each of those individually then, right? Okay. On item M, we have approving a repository bid in the amount of two, one hundred dollars submitted by Shirley Pino of Homestead, Florida, for property located at eighteen twenty-five to twenty-seven Walton Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. I'll call for the vote. Councilman Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Carper is absent. Ellis?
No.
Ickes?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass. Item N is approving a repository bid in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
No. The N and O are not being polled.
Sorry.
No problem. It'd be easy to.
So, now we're on P. So, P through?
Z.
Through Z.
We can't take those as a group?
No, I asked last minute.
I'll just be like a kid. I'll keep asking until you get-
Yeah, yeah, till we get- We'll ask more next time.
Okay. I think I use this right here.
I guess my other question would be, do these need to be on the agenda at all? I guess they do. Rebecca already asked that question.
I caught, talked to Shirley, and she said they would like a vote submitted. That's by resolution, and they need the resolution attached to the taxing district form.
Makes sense. Yeah, that's cool.
P, approving a repository bid in the amount of two hundred and eighty dollars submitted by Wilson Ribero of San Carlos, California, for property located at two oh eight to two ten East Cherry Avenue, further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. I'll call for the vote. Councilman Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Carper is absent. Ellis?
No.
Ickes?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass. And we have item Q, approving a repository bid in the amount of two hundred and sixty dollars submitted by Wilson Ribero of San Carlos, California for property located at eleven twenty-four to twenty-six North Fifth Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. I'll call for the vote. Councilman Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Carper is absent. Ellis?
No.
Ickes?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass. Item R is approving a repository bid in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five dollars submitted by Wilson Ribero of San Carlos, California for property located at eighteen seventeen to nineteen Eighth Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Council members Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Carper is absent. Ellis?
No.
Ickes?
No.
Kelly?
No.
And Mayor Pacifico?
No.
The vote does not pass. Item S is approving a repository bid in the amount of three hundred dollars submitted by Wilson Ribero of San Carlos, California for property located at twenty thirteen to fifteen Thirteenth Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. I'll call for the vote. Council members Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Carper is absent. Ellis?
No.
Ickes?
No.
Kelly?
No.
And Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass. Item T is approving a repository bid in the amount of five hundred dollars submitted by Jose Caballero of Puerto Rico for property located at three twenty-seven to twenty-nine Wapsenonic Avenue, further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Call for the vote. Councilmember Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Carper is absent. Ellis?
No.
Ickes?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass. Councilmember U, councilmember, sure. Item U, approving a repository bid in the amount of five hundred dollars submitted by Jose Caballero of, of Puerto Rico for property located at three thirty-one to thirty-three Wapsenonic Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. I'll call for the vote. Councilmembers Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh? Butterbaugh?
No.
Carper is absent. Ellis?
No.
Ickes?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
The vote does not pass. Item U, no, I did item U. Item V, approving a repository bid in the amount of five hundred dollars submitted by Jose Caballero of Puerto Rico for property located at eighteen thirteen to fifteen Crawford Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. I'll call for the vote. Councilmembers Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Carper is absent. Ellis?
No.
Ickes?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
The vote does not pass. Councilman, yeah, geez. Item W. Approving a repository bid in the amount of five hundred dollars submitted by David Anderson of Spring, Texas, for property located at thirty-one twenty-seven to thirty-three Seventh Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Call for the vote. Councilmembers Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Carper is absent. Ellis?
No.
Ickes?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass. Item X, approving a repository bid in the amount of two hundred dollars submitted by Marvin Solis of Richmond, California, for property located at eleven oh eight Seventeenth Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. I'll call for the vote. Councilmembers Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Carper, absent. Ellis?
No.
Ickes?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
Vote does not pass. Item Y is approving a repository bid in the amount of two hundred dollars for property submitted by Marvin Solis of Richmond, California, for property located eleven ten Seventeenth Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Councilmembers Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Carper is absent. Ellis?
No.
Ickes?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass. And last but not least, but then we've got to do the consent vote.
Yeah.
I didn't forget. I didn't forget. Item Z, which is approving a repository bid in the amount of twelve hundred dollars submitted by Christopher Jorstad of Mesa, Arizona, for property located at thirty-one twenty-seven to thirty-three Seventh Avenue, further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Call for the vote. Councilmembers Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Carper is absent. Ellis?
No.
Ickes?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass. And I will go now for the consent vote. Consent vote. You didn't mark down which ones.
It's items A through L.
Thank you.
Items A through L, N and O.
Thank you. Appreciate that. A through L, N and O, for the consent vote. Call for the vote. Councilman Beatty?
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
Yes.
Councilman Carper is absent. Councilman Ellis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ickes?
Yes.
Councilman Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico?
Yes.
And the consent vote passes six to zero. And we have three ordinances on the agenda for adoption. The first ordinance was introduced by Councilman Butterbaugh, and it's an ordinance of the City of Altoona amending the Code of the City of Altoona, Chapter eight hundred, entitled zoning, to amend Section eight hundred dash twenty-seven, entitled zoning map, to rezone from single household residential to mixed-use residential commercial. Ten parcels of property located on the northern side of South Kettle Street, from East Grant Avenue to East Boltsel Avenue, all as shown on the map attached to said ordinance as Exhibit A, provide enabling and severability of provisions, repeal her, and establish an effective date. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
This ordinance was moved for adoption by Councilman Ellis and seconded by Vice Mayor Ickes, and I will call for the vote. Councilman Beatty?
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
Yes.
Councilman Carper is absent. Councilman Ellis?
Yes.
Councilman Ickes?
Yes.
Councilman Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
Yes.
Vote passes five to zero. I'm sorry, five to one. The second ordinance for adoption wa, is, was introduced by Councilman Beatty, and it's an ordinance of the City of Altoona amending the Code of the City of Altoona to revise Chapter six thirty-three, entitled street vacation, to vacate a portion of an unnamed fifteen-foot alley located between East Southee Avenue and Frost Avenue in Altoona, containing three thousand one hundred and two square feet in the City of Altoona, Blair County, Pennsylvania. Reaffirm Chapter six thirty-three as amended, provide severability and repeal provisions, and provide an effective date. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
This ordinance was, was that Councilman Butterbaugh?
Yeah.
Okay. This ordinance was moved for adoption by Councilman Ellis and seconded by Councilman Butterbaugh, and I'll call for the vote. Councilman Beatty?
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
Yes.
Councilman Carper is absent. Councilman Ellis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ickes?
Yes.
Councilman Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico?
Yes.
And the vote passes six to zero. We have one more ordinance for adoption, which was introduced by Councilman Ellis. It's an ordinance of the City of Altoona, Blair County, Pennsylvania, which authorizes the vacation and abandonment of a fifteen-foot unopened alley between East Southee Avenue and Frost Avenue pursuant to Chapter two ninety-five dash eight of the Altoona City Code, and further authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a quitclaim deed to Rebecca S. Bargher and any accompanying documentation to relinquish any right, title, and/or interest the City of Altoona has or may have in said unopened alley. Provide severability of provisions, repeal her, and provide an effective date. Is there a motion for adoption?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Thank you. This ordinance was moved for adoption by Councilman Beatty, seconded by Councilman Ellis, and I'll call for the vote. Councilman Beatty?
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
Yes.
Councilman Carper is absent. Councilman Ellis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ickes?
Yes.
Councilman Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico?
Yeah.
The vote passes six to zero.
All right, city manager updates. Omar?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, just a few items to talk about. Most specifically, maybe most importantly, we are looking at a new intermunicipal stormwater I have a draft version of it now. If you've been reading the newspaper, there was a discussion of it at the recent Holidaysburg Borough Meeting. The member municipalities are looking at a two-year agreement. The city is the largest participant, or I should say, we're the, we, we participate with the largest percentage of the total, and that's, the total is based thirty percent on population, twenty percent on stream length within the municipality, and fifty percent on impervious surface. So we're looking at a total of about two hundred and eighty-three, or excuse me, four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars over the next two years for that purpose. This is just kind of a heads up, and, you know, we'll be talking about that in more detail whenever we bring this forward in a future month, probably next month, for adoption. Also, I wanted to say that the biweekly meetings with the consultants at CZB LLC will continue tomorrow. Some staff folks will be involved in that. The financial audit is almost complete. We will, once it's complete, and have a final version, that'll be distributed to council. The auditor then will come in and make a presentation to council about that audit. That typically happens in August or September. And just want to remind council that on Wednesday, City Hall will be closed for Flag Day. That's all I have right now. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council discussion items. Councilman Kelly?
Mayor, I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Butterbaugh?
Nothing.
Councilman Ickes?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take the time to appreciate many of the department heads, the city manager, and several members of council that played a really heavy part in getting Prospect Pool open this year. I know my kids enjoyed some time painting there a couple of weekends ago, and I know it was quite the undertaking. And the Saturday that it was open, we had finished some construction at my house, and we were unable to attend opening day, but I can tell you there was no other place I wanted to be that day, was Prospect Pool, and it seemed like it was quite, quite a great turnout. So I just wanted to comment and highlight what appears to be a pretty strong victory out of the gate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ellis?
Yes. I'd like to echo Councilman Ickes's comments about the Prospect Pool. I think Omar and Nate did a great job leading us into this after we dumped it on them earlier this year. And I also want to thank Councilman Beatty for his dogged approach to making all this come together, and I think it's been a great thing for the community. I've had a lot of people reach out to me, and with appreciation that we've taken this type of step, so I, I thank you all for the work that you did. I also want to recognize the Overflow Church, who conducted four cleanup evenings, May third, tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth. They were neighborhood cleanup and fix-up program. They had volunteers in. Bergmeyer's Halling provided roll-off for each of the four nights, and volunteers filled those roll-offs up completely on all four nights. There was also, from the fix-up program, we were able to repair a porch railing on a house that was in codes, for, having to have a porch railing. We removed part of a garage roof and replaced it with a percolar roof for the garage, and we replaced a shed roof and a porch roof on another house that was in codes. So, thanks to Pastor Cox and all of the volunteers there.
Thank you. Councilman Beatty?
I just wanted to thank all the citizens that showed up for the opening day of Prospect. We had close to seven hundred people, which I think was a record, and went very smoothly, the employees, the lifeguards, Blair Central Rec for balancing water, Nate for cutting grass, and all the other things that he had to do up there. The city workers put up a railing around the sun deck that had been closed for many years. It's now open to enjoy. The concession stand came out really nice. The food's good, so if you're swimming in Prospect, make sure you hit the concession stand. Just thank Omar for his help, and I think it was a big success. It's safe, it's clean, and that's the way we intend to keep it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like to remind everybody that the comp plan, open houses are going to be coming up here in July, July tenth, three PM at Juniata Civics, July eleventh, twelve PM at Altoona High School, and July eleventh, five thirty PM at the Trolley Works. So if you would like to learn more about the comp plan, and to kind of provide some input and feedback, please show up there. I'm sure our friends from the media were going to report on this for us anyways, but I wanted to put that out there. We'll now take questions from the media.
What's that? Thank you. I guess to start with, Bruce, I know you're on the phone, but I hope you can hear me. Would you care to say why you voted no on the zoning, on the rezoning of Kettle?
I hope you can hear me as well. All of us were just very much, but I'm out of town, as you can get. Assistant, you know, when we, this was first raised at a work session at a meeting in City Hall, you know, we, we also was brought out that zoning citywide was going to be looked at in the, in the not-too-distant future, and I just, you know, wondered why this wasn't saved till that point in time, so we could look at a citywide change rather than just look at one specific, very small area in the city. And I felt that it made more sense to look at it if we looked at the entire city in, in total.
Good, thanks. Anybody else want to say anything about why they voted yes, other than they've already said, I guess?
It didn't, oh.
Go ahead.
Somebody else want to go? Go ahead. No, it didn't change anything other than helping the existing business owners.
Anybody else want to say anything? Regarding the statement that was read at the beginning of the meeting on the landlords, would anybody care to comment on, on those actions that were taken on, I guess the one landlord was already publicly known, and the two others that have happened since then? Anybody care to say anything about that?
Bill, I would say that council is committed to not permitting irresponsible landlords in our city any longer.
I'll just add, Bill, that I got the list of the properties that are involved in this revocation process, and I drove around the city and put eyes on it, all forty, I believe it's forty-seven houses and an empty lot, and very few of them would it be comfortable for someone to move into. And some of them are an absolute disgrace and are a major part of the problems we're having with Blight.
Bill, I just want to say that, you know, this, I think this council, more than anything I can remember in my lifetime, is committed to cleaning Altoona up, and, you know, whatever ordinances we can use and whatever ability we have, we will exercise. And I think, you know, building new homes, rehabbing homes, and cleaning up rental properties that need it are the one thing that we will concentrate on going forward.
Dave, when you're talking about forty-eight homes, these are homes that were owned by the three individuals?
By the three individuals, yes. And, and Bill, something that I think is missed in this whole thing is there's actually people living in these conditions, okay? It's absolutely deplorable.
How many people were relocated? Like how many households, and then how many individual people relocated?
Rebecca, do you know that?
There were three Operation Safe Space conducted. The first was seven. The second was?
Seven individuals.
Seven individuals. The second was three, and the third was Four.
Bill, they're, it's a separate thing. Like the three Operation Safe Space things were three separate properties, and then what Councilman Ellis was talking about was the forty-eight properties that happened to be owned by the three landlords whose licenses were revoked. And so there are properties where people are still living there, where that is in the process of being sorted out. And I've been, thirteen years.
And I've been, thirteen years of work, like, this, this, we've been wanting to do this all along, and former mayors and council have worked very hard on this, but the state laws are finally catching up to help us. And what we have learned over the years is there's basically three tiers of housing. There is private rentals that are well-kept, and then you have Section Eight housing where rules apply and where people have to abide by those rules in order for everybody to be safe in the neighborhoods and residents to be safe that live there. Where the problem exists is the sub-Section Eight housing, or the unkept, private, under-the-radar housing where investments are not being properly made. This is where your drug activity is. This is where your blight is. And by instituting these measures, we are on an exponential path to make Altoona a safer place to live. And I want to commend the mayor, and that's something that gets lost in a lot of this, because of his work in the leg of cities over the years that he's been mayor, and former mayors have done that too, but he's been able to, as a full-time mayor, to have an excellent influence on the lawmaking process at the state level. And, well, a few weeks ago, when we went to the Blight Summit in West Moreland County, we were mentioned, about every five minutes, somebody was mentioning how Altoona's programs are ahead of the rest. And that's a great testimony to our staff, to our codes, and to the resolve that this council has to ridding this city of blight and of drugs and of crime activity and of slums.
Well, I'd like to add, Bill, you know, that this is probably the one segment of housing in Altoona that sucks up codes' time, you know, so that we can't enforce other codes' issues, because we spend eighty percent of our time in this one section of housing. And if we could fix this problem, it would open codes up to do other work in other neighborhoods that would benefit everybody.
And not just codes' time. Police and fire spend a lot of time in these properties as well.
Dave, you referred to the process of taking care of the other people who will be, who now live in the other houses that these people, these three guys owned, or these three people owned. What's that gonna look like? What's gonna happen?
That's going to be over time. It's not a snap your fingers and be done, but if anybody'd like to elaborate on that, yeah.
So, Bill, the tenants of these forty-seven properties, they are permitted, as long as the properties have not been condemned and red-tagged, they're permitted to remain in the properties until the termination of their lease or until they leave voluntarily. So this revocation status doesn't force the tenants out, and it doesn't require them to leave and find other housing. The only time that would be required is if the property was ordered vacated due to a condemnation status.
And at this point, none of those are...
At this point, yes. We had four of those, at least four of those properties were red-tagged.
Bill, we're working with Blair County Community Action to host an informational session on this coming Thursday for people that were displaced, for resources. A lot of the people, in fact, I think most of the people, if not all the people, have been relocated to new housing. So just for the sake of those folks who are in these other houses where, you know, they don't know what's going on, since the owners lost their licenses, we're kind of hosting this, well, Blair Cap's hosting it, we're kind of providing the facility for them, but so that...
You mean for the people who have been removed from their houses? Or from the, for the people who are gone?
People that are, people that are part of this process, whether they have already been forced to leave a house because of its conditions, or they're part of this, you know, one of the people living in one of these forty-some remaining houses.
Whose leases are still going?
Right.
Did, I know the first group of seven people were taken to hotels, except for, I think, one person who didn't want to go. What about the others in those, in the two other properties that were emptied? Did they go to hotels, or where'd they go?
It's my understanding that Blair County Community Action did provide them and with hotels, and I believe they did, they did go to hotels, yes.
And are they looking, is Blair Community Action looking for more permanent type of housing?
Correct, they are.
I guess I forget, or maybe it didn't register, but Tom, could you explain to me the nature of the authorization in January that allowed for this to happen?
Basically, Bill, that ordinance, what it did is it basically set a criteria, as council was alluding to, where you have landlords who have habitual failings to, you know, maintain properties, to keep their, you know, address code violations, things of that nature. And the purpose of that was to basically, you know, make landlords, you know, comply with the code and to provide consequences for those who habitually do not. And what you're seeing here is that the end result of that.
And was that authorized by some new state law, to be able to do that in the first place, or?
Go ahead, if you want.
No, this was, this was passed by city council. It was an amendment to our existing rental, regis, rental inspection program.
Oh, so it was always available all along, basically?
Correct. We had the revocation tolls in our ordinance, but this provided additional tolls for compliance.
Did it, were there any landlords who responded to the threat of that and got right with the law before these ones that got hammered by it, so to speak? Do you know?
We haven't had anything like that right, no, we haven't.
Thanks. Would anybody care to comment on the ARPA Business District Revitalization Grant Awards?
I think the staff did a great job reviewing them. As I think you can see, there was a significant amount of interest, and obviously more interest than we had money to get out and the resources to provide. But I think, as I reviewed them, they seemed to be a very widespread investment in our community.
Diana, do you want to share what the requests for funds were?
So there were over ninety requests, I think it was ninety-five or ninety-seven requests, and of those, there were eighty unique applicants. So some of them were duplicating, same applicant, different projects. Some of them are also previous, last year's grant awardees who came in for another request. We reviewed them, we actually went through them three times, and we made fifty awards of eleven thousand dollars each, and we did not fund anyone who received funds previously or give more than one grant to an applicant.
Yeah, we had two-point-one-nine million in requests, and we awarded over five-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand.
Yeah, we had five-hundred-thirty, five-hundred thousand in funds in new money available, and then we had forty thousand available that were from awards that didn't go through, where applicants withdrew for one reason or the other. So the total awards were about five-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand.
And Jesse, how many, what was the total request amount?
It was two, total request was two-point-one-nine million.
And that sort of thing is kind of, is not unusual. There's just a lot of need and...
Thanks. Would anybody care to comment on the renaming of Hamilton Ball Field for Coach Gene?
I didn't know Gene Himes through baseball. I knew him through bowling. But Gene was a super-great guy, a guy who personified his love of Jesus Christ and instilled that into children, whether he was coaching or helping raise his family. Definitely someone that you could take to the bank, just truly genuine and good-hearted, and it was kind of neat to have this opportunity, as someone who knew him and his family pretty well, to be sitting here to partake in that and the renaming, so. Well deserved.
And would anybody care, I know Omar said that this is gonna be coming up for further discussion, but would anybody care to comment on the ISC, the Intergovernmental Stormwater Committee's renewal request at this point?
Expensive.
That's all mandated. That's all.
I will ask this. This is not part of your question, but Nate, if we were to not be part of the ISC, what would our individual MPDES permit cost the city?
At this point in time, I think it would be a lot more than what we're into it for. I mean, because we don't have enough, like, with the requirements of what the department has right now, we don't have enough, like, stream bed or stream banks to make it work. So I honestly think you would end up having to build a treatment plan of some sorts to get your reduction without doing this. So going forward, as you stay into the group, I think, you know, there has to be, the legislation has to look at it, because we're not alone in this. There's a lot of municipalities that don't have creeks that run through, you know, and feel-good projects like that. So maybe there's some type of a credit sharing, or a credit bank that you could just buy into. It really should be a statewide thing, whether you're, you know, Bedford, PA, or Altoona, PA, or wherever everybody should have to pay into. But, so maybe that's, and Pendott last time got their permit, they were able to RFP, and basically all of Pendott could buy into it, so it made it a lot cheaper. We, as municipalities, don't have that option right now. So our option would be to go out on our own, and we just, I, you would, I don't even know how much it would be, but I'm telling you, it would be a lot more than this, so. I think this was the best option for the unfunded mandate that y'all had.
It would be in the millions.
Oh, it's in the millions already, so I'm saying it's in the tens or twenties millions.
And it's mandated, and communities, especially down east, they've gotten fined heavily for not compliance. As a matter of fact, when our first year, we were, we were going to be fined and then got in compliance, and then they forgave the, and let us move on with what we did.
Nate, is this, I know that the five-year permit that was beginning at the end of this year was extended for two years, basically, but did you say earlier today, tonight, that there's actually a new five-year permit that the organization has received, that the first two years of which won't have any requirement changes?
So the bigger municipalities, like the city, Logan Township, they, we have our own individual MPDES permits for stormwater discharge. The smaller boroughs, like Blair Township, like the smaller townships, they're covered under the general permit that had just been administratively extended. So we just, we did not get our new permit yet, but we got our draft copy that said we're looking good to get, you know, our new permit. But yes, for the first two years, it appears that there's a stay of execution for any new requirements above and beyond the eighteen-through-twenty-three permit.
Okay. So essentially, they, it's not like they extended the old permit, they just extended the old, or they just waived the new requirements for two years, basically?
Yeah, because I don't think they know what they want.
Yeah, sorry. And then Omar, where does the ISC money come from?
So we have a big piggy bank, Bill, that we use. Everybody puts coins in there throughout the years, and we collect it. Now, we just, we have, up to this point, it's come through a special reserve fund.
Okay.
That fund is being depleted, so beyond the current request, you know, we may have to look at another source.
And there's enough to take care of the four-hundred-and-eighty-five?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.